Welcome to our 2024 Town Hall event. It's beautiful out, sunny out, and you've taken this evening off to come and spend it with us, so we really appreciate that. I'm Rob Buckin. I'll be your emcee for the evening, and for the last two and a half years, you may not know this, I've been your city manager. I was first introduced to Prince Rupert in this hall in November 2019 when I came up to listen to the unveiling of Vision 2030. I was so impressed with that—oh my gosh, this is really bright—I was so impressed with that event that I agreed to do some planning services for the city, and that kept me occupied for about three years, until I became your city manager in October of 2022. I am grateful for the experience of working in Prince Rupert, which is located on the Shemshen and Smaliak-speaking people's territories. As a visitor on this territory, I am thankful to be able to work alongside our neighboring nations. There is a culture and history here from time immemorial that predates any of the pipes that went into the ground or other infrastructure that we will be discussing here tonight. Prior to my time working in Prince Rupert, I worked as a city planner and a city manager in communities for over thirty years, until I retired in 2018. And my wife and I built a retirement home in Central Sanich and decided to develop a small farm and do—and I do a little consulting on the side. Then I came here. And there were a few things that convinced me to come out of retirement, and I would say that they were—basically, they revolved around the appeal of Vision 2030, the staff team. Now Prince Rupert is very lucky to have the quality of the staff that it has. It's a senior management, a management team that is among the best that I've worked with over the last thirty, thirty-five years. The mayor and council, the last mayor and council and the current mayor and council, this community is really well-served by the quality of our mayor and council. They debate things, they have different points of view, they make a decision, and it's all done respectfully with a vision—with a view to getting things done for this community. And I have to tell you, as some thirty-five years in the business, you don't find that all the time. So it was a big appeal for me. We need to start with an appropriate welcome to this territory, so I'd like to invite Chief Alex Campbell to the stage to give a territorial welcome. He's on his way.
Hello, Anne.
How are you doing?
Very good. Bye, Wa. Way. Simgeget. Simgeget. Sigirmanal. Legatigeet. Chanisapna. Luwanda. Tsimwaa. Samachtu. To'ar. Agwasam. Waka'tgoyak. Sim. And lakhiubut. Tsimshen. Kitlakwa. Lamms. Eram. Malchaa. Ahui. Agwasam. La'golgalak. La'golgalak. Say't. Say't. Qawri. Chanisnu. Eram. Blisavskum. Erekonu. Some. Hoxka. Amda. Hai. Tagwasam. Chiefs. Chiefs. Matriarchs. Honored guests, and all those that are in this building. I'm happy to see everybody that's coming out to this meeting, and I pray that all will go well and—coming from the chiefs from Lakwa Lamms and Malakatah, we say to you, every one of you, welcome to the territory of Tsimshen. I pray that everything goes well this day. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Campbell, for that thoughtful welcome. Some of you may have been here about three years ago when the former mayor, Brain, gave a town hall. I can't see any hands, so I'll just assume that some of you were. In that town hall, former Mayor Brain spoke to the challenges—the infrastructure challenges that are faced by this community, and put a price tag for about $10 million a year more that we would need to address those challenges. In the intervening years, we've been very busy refining and defining the extent of our infrastructure challenge. We've hired consultants, we've had estimates provided, and I can tell you that that $10 million is only about a third of what we actually need on an annual basis to address what we have to do. Our challenges are bigger than we had known, but we have a plan that we're going to share with you. So in this town hall, we're going to do a number of things. We're going to give you an overview of how we got to this point in our history. We're going to describe our challenge—or infrastructure challenge—to you in some detail, and we're going to lay out our strategy, our plan, for how we're going to be successful in addressing our infrastructure needs. And we'll also discuss some other important community-building activities. It's not all about pipes, but if you don't have the pipes, there's not much else. So I'm going to ask the speakers for this evening to come out to the stage. We have seven for you: His Worship Mayor Pond, our Chief Financial Officer Corinne Bombin, and I'm assuming they're all coming out now? Okay. Our Director of Operations and Intergovernmental Relations, Richard Pucci; our Director of Planning and Development Services, Mifanwe Pope; our Director of Transportation and Economic Development, Paul Vendettelli; our Director of Corporate and Legislative Services, Rosa Miller; and our new—I'm very pleased to say—our new Director of Recreation and Community Services, Nicole Borrelgard. Now I'm going to hand this mic over to His Worship Mayor Pond.
It's not going to let go. Oh, I'm so sorry, that's noisy. All right, we'll try and do it from right here. The history of Prince Rupert, as you well know, goes back 10,000 years and more, as people used this harbor and lived and worked in it, and create great social societies and arts and culture. But we're going to talk a little bit about the city of Prince Rupert and the founding of the city of Prince Rupert, and I want to give you just a sense of the big picture before we drill down into all of the small details and—do I have to hit it again? That's a really interesting slide. So what if you gave a presentation and none of the slides show up? We'll get it in just a second. What I hope to do in the slides that I'm presenting is give you a sense of where we're at in the journey of Prince Rupert. Okay, there we go. So that's what we're going to cover yet this evening. Where am I needing to aim this? Because it's not listening to me. Marco? We've gone blank again. So imagine—all right, that's the one I'm hitting, I promise you.
Yeah, get somebody qualified.
And before we get going, I did want to acknowledge that also present in the room, but not up on the stage, are a number of our city councillors. Oh, and the mayor of Port Edward is here, welcome, Your Worship. We've got councillor Barry Cunningham, councillor Wade Nish, I saw councillor Nick Adie here. I don't know if there's any other members of the council, I can't see the room, but—okay, here we are. Oh, and it's going already. All right. So in the earliest days, we were founded—a great place for a port, a great place for a railhead, a terrible place to try to build a city. And so for the first forty years of our existence, we were about 6,000 people and never grew past that. And then we built a pulp mill in Prince Rupert, and between the pulp mill and the fishing, we ballooned in our population. It felt like it would never end, and many people in this room remember those days really well. And then towards the end of that forty-year era, things began to falter, and we, in the beginning, thought that was just a little bit of a cyclical downturn. It turned out to be a whole lot more than that, and many of us lived through that collapse of the pop—this is the population of Prince Rupert. It got up to just under 17,000 and then collapsed down, and if it hadn't been for the opening of the container terminal in 2008, I would suggest that number would have just kept falling and falling and falling. We've leveled out at about 12,000, so we're kind of repeating what we did at the beginning. And if you think back to the very beginning, the dream was a city of about 40,000 people, people showed up trying to create that city, they built infrastructure for a city that would eventually become that big, we were going to rival Vancouver in that era. 6,000 people, it never really grew. But think about what happened. The very first train arrived in Prince Rupert in April of 2014, and six months later, the entire world went to war. World War I hit, and then it was followed by the Great Depression, and then it was followed by World War II. And so world events kind of overtook Prince Rupert, and our population remained fairly flat. Where you move across into the second—into the growth era, two things happened. The pulp mill was constructed, and that drove all kinds of growth, but also Highway 16 was extended and changed. We often talk about how it connected us to terrorists, but in fact, Highway 16 in the earliest days never even went through Prince George, it went north of Prince George. Prince George, just at the crossover point where Rupert was starting to rise, were 8,500 people. Terrorists barely had 900, Prince George had maybe 4,000. So the road changed, Highway 16 changed, we changed, we became a manufacturing town. We don't think of ourselves in that light, but we took raw fish and turned it into canned food products. We took raw wood, raw timber, and turned it into lumber products and pulp, and we sent that all over the world, and that's what drove that growth. And if you close your eyes and you think about the Prince Rupert that you know today, almost all of it was built then. Everything from the swimming pool to the ice rink to the curling club to the golf course to the hospital to the airport to the B.C. ferries, Alaska ferries, every hotel in town, almost every apartment building. We opened up subdivisions, Crestview and all around the hospital, Kootnee and Pillsbury and all of that, all happened in that era. It was tremendous growth. But when we talk about infrastructure, there's several things that jump out for me. One is, the infrastructure that got built was for a pretty big town, and it was built quickly, it all went into the ground all at once. And then in that growth era, and again, many of you remember that era, if there was a thought of needing to replace pipes, we were so wealthy, we just knew we could do it as we needed to. That was the thinking of the day. And that era ended, in fact, in my mind, the crowning glory of that era is the very building we're in. The Leicester Centre of the Arts was completed in 1987, really just as we were beginning to come off the end of that curve. And then we went into that deep transition. And so the challenge that the city faces, this challenge that we all face together, is that we've got that infrastructure that's left over from those days, and we're now not in a growth phase, we're in this holding pattern with 12,000 people trying to rebuild. It's a massive challenge, but I think it's one we're up to. So we've had some real wins, you can click the next clicker there. So yeah, I kind of covered that. You know, we were left with this amazing community, all these assets. It is an incredible place to live, but the loss of the residents and the vacancies in our commercial buildings have really, really left us in a bit of a bind in terms of directly addressing the challenges. Next one. So it just simply costs more to be in Prince Rupert. Like I said, it's a very expensive place to put a city. Our water supply is—we're on an island, you know we're on an island. Our water supply is over on the mainland and linked by a submarine line that comes across underneath. It's a very expensive proposition. We're on rock and muskeg, so you know, every time we go to build, we're having to blast or haul muskeg away. That makes our landfill incredibly expensive to operate. Almost every other landfill in the province, first of all, is operated by the regional district where communities get together and share that cost, but secondly, they have sands and gravels, and they're able to just pull back the soil, and those soils are really big aids in terms of the landfill. Our landfill is one of a kind, it's incredible. Our water system, very expensive to operate. There's nobody else in the province that has to take an airport ferry to an island airport. That's a million and a half dollars a year, at least, in terms of subsidy from the taxpayers of Prince Rupert. Next one. But I've got to say, we've had some incredibly big wins, and there's much more needed, but I want to share with you some of those wins. Go ahead. So first of all, we were down in Victoria to celebrate $77 million contribution from the federal government through what's known as DMAT, Disaster Mitigation Something Fund. And that is 77 million that—if you've been following us at all, you know we've been waiting for that money, because prior to that, we got 65 million from the premier. I think that's what's coming next. 65 million, that's what kind of launched it. About this time last year, the premier saw the state we were in, he understood the risk of the collapse of the pipes, he gave us 65 million dollars. We made a really tough decision, do we just start spending 65, or do we go for the whole enchilada and go for the federal money and make it a bigger project? And so we did, and that's why we're celebrating. Next slide. The other piece is the RBA. Previous councils have worked for ten years to get us to a place where the province would begin to return some of the revenues that are earned in the north to the north. And this is a beginning, it's a five-year deal, 250 million, shared across 21 local governments. We don't know exactly what our take on that will be, but it'll be substantial, and what's most significant is it's every year for five years, and so it's money we can actually borrow against, we can count on it coming in. Next slide. Finally, the roundabout, and I know this is very controversial, and I think in the end, people will see the benefit of it, but if you take the roundabout out of it, one of the things that staff was very successful in doing was twisting the arms of Department of Highways to do the $13 million of pipe work that lies under where that roundabout would be. That would be money that we would have had to raise in other ways, so there's another 13 million that gets put in with the 77, with the 65, and then the 45 that we borrowed as a community. And I think I'm just about done. And it's back to you, Dr. Buckin.
Thank you, Mayor Pond. I find personally the context really useful in understanding what our challenges are, and I hope you have the sense that we are still facing these big challenges, but we have a way forward. We're looking at this possibility of this great transition in this community. All right, next slide, please. So despite some very good news of funding announcements, and funding announcements which are—you know, we're punching way above our weight level, that the amount that we've received is considerable for a community of our size, we still have a long way to go. We've raised, including our borrowing, about $200 million for this current 26 kilometers of water and sewer pipes that we need to replace last year even. But as this slide shows you, there's another $450 million of assets in the ground and above the ground that are beyond their life expectancy. The fire hall is beyond this life expectancy. We need a new fire hall, we need to do water treatment, we need to replace and fix bridges, we need to do wastewater treatment, that's mandated by the federal government. We're looking at renovating the McCarthy Building for a new public works building, a much cheaper option for us. And as much as we're replacing 26 kilometers of water and sewer with this current funding, there's another 26 kilometers of water and sewer lines that have to be replaced not long after. And our ferry, our ferry's going in for a refit in a couple of weeks, we'll get hopefully another five years out of it, but that ferry is—it's the longest-running ferry of that model in the world. It doesn't have long for us.
Build a bridge.
Well, now we need—that would add several more zeros to our infrastructure challenge. So you can see we're not out of the woods, but we have made some great strides, and we want to make sure we don't get in this position again, so we are looking at implementing a plan, a maintenance schedule, programs to make sure that our assets don't fall behind. Next slide, please. So we have a plan for moving forward. Council has a strategic plan. Now I'm not going to go into the details of the strategic plan, you can all access it, the link's on the front page of our website, but it addresses our financial matters, our fiscal health, our infrastructure, community renewal, housing. Housing, new housing is desperately needed to support the growth that the port is looking at, and other things that are important for this community, for any community. So we have a plan forward. Now I'm not going to speak about the details of our actions, but I'm going to ask our staff, our directors, to come up and speak to each of these, and then we're going to start with Richard Pucci.
Thank you very much. Good evening. So tonight, I've been asked to briefly speak with you about the state of our infrastructure and the city's current plan of attack on our water system challenges as well. We are extremely pleased that we've received a positive announcement from the federal government, and we were successful in receiving $77.2 million under the Disaster Mitigation and Adaptation Fund. But what does that mean? So before we get there, I want to take a step back and really explain to everyone how our water system works. The water system for the city is fairly unique among Canadian municipalities. The city is located on Kan Island and receives its raw water from a watershed on the mainland, which is nearly 10 kilometers away. Water from the lake travels down a seven-and-a-half-kilometer pipeline where it is treated by chlorine gas injection before it is split into two submarine lines that make a crossing of 250 meters across from passage. The system is capable of supplying 10 million gallons of water per day to a population of approximately 25,000 people or more. However, we are just supporting it today by a population of about 12,800. There's a backup water supply that we rely on constantly. This consists of a pumping station located at Shawatlin's Lake. Now, the distribution system is fragile and prone to leaks. The date of pipe installation is not well documented, but we know it was placed using substandard materials and workmanship to today's standards. Therefore, the majority of this water system is past any reasonable life expectancy. If the system had a catastrophic failure, the city would be uninhabitable until repairs were made and the system was recommissioned. With the city evacuated and no functioning businesses, the port industries would have serious challenges maintaining their level of service. The port of Prince Rupert sees over $60 billion worth of trade through its gateway, and any service reductions for even a week would have major impacts on the Canadian supply chain and would have serious economic and social impacts provincially and nationally.
Sixty billion.
Correct, 60 billion.
One year.
Correct.
About.
60 billion worth of trade through, yes. Additionally, the loss of water and evacuation of the city would have a serious impact on the First Nations community that use Prince Rupert as a hub. Since 2015, the number of water service breaks has doubled, and annual water main breaks have increased almost tenfold. These are the water main breaks across our whole community. Some communities only respond to about four water service breaks a year, whereas we can have multiple in one day. In the summer of 2022, a critical main break rendered the city 45 minutes away from losing water to the entire community, which, if occurred, would have collapsed the entire water system. Following that event, the city began discussions with the federal and provincial governments. Then over the Christmas holiday of 2022, we were forced to call a local state of emergency due to escalating conditions. During that time, we increased from 21 main breaks to over 30, and from 170 service breaks to over 190. Remember, some of these communities are only seeing four per year, and we're bumping up against 40. During the state of local emergency, every able-bodied public works employee was transitioned to water repairs, and the city called in three private contractors and three subcontractors to assist. Now, the age and condition of the asset is the major issue, and a large portion of these mains were installed prior to 1920, creating what's called a bulking effect of the entire system. It was all put in at once, therefore it's all failing at once. We knew that we had to take immediate action. We then identified 26.2 kilometers worth of high-risk and high-end-of-life water mains that need immediate replacement at a value of around $130 million. Now, this does not include water treatment, which has been delayed due to leaky distribution system. Now, for context, that's one-third of our water system past reasonable life expectancy, and that's the same length—oh, no, I'm sorry. And that's about one-third of our water system and the same length as driving from B.C. ferries to the cannery in Port Edward, the North Pacific Cannery. As stated in the last slide, the report identified just over 26 kilometers of high-priority water mains that require immediate replacement in order to mitigate the risk of complete failure. The provincial government stepped up right away with financial assistance, while the federal government told us that they cannot participate at this time. However, they allowed us to enter into a grant program, which meant that we could go after sewer and storm money as well, but this delayed us spending the provincial funds. So we worked closely with their team and spent time in Ottawa advancing the concerns and made application. The PRPA joined us arm-in-arm in this initiative as we both felt the concerns for the importance of our water infrastructure for renewal of the community and economic growth. In anticipation of a positive funding announcement, the city developed the Water Distribution Renewal Project. This project seeks to complete the design and replacement of the mains through a progressive approach in critical infrastructure corridors. These corridors are identified in the attached map here and will be prioritized for replacement over the next three to four years. So as you can see in this slide, all of our hard work paid off, and we're able to secure $77.2 million in the federal DMAT fund, $65 million from the province, $45 million in approved city borrowing, and $13 million in underground utilities from the roundabout. All of this equals a staggering $200 million. On the last two, we are very thankful to the residents of Prince Rupert for stepping up and recognizing the importance of renewal. We would not have received the $77.2 million without contributing our share of $45 million as matching funds. Lastly, the $13 million for the roundabout does include the utilities under the roadway, which is included in the 26.2 kilometers, so that reduces the overall burden of the project and has enormous benefit to our community. and the city called in three private contractors and three subcontractors to assist. Now, the age and condition of the asset is the major issue, and a large portion of these mains were installed prior to 1920, creating what's called a bulking effect of the entire system. It was all put in at once, therefore it's all failing at once. We knew that we had to take immediate action. We then identified 26.2 kilometers worth of high-risk and high end-of-life water mains that need immediate replacement at a value of around $130 million. Now, this does not include water treatment, which has been delayed due to leaky distribution system. Now, for context, that's one-third of our water system past reasonable life expectancy, and that's the same length... Oh, no, I'm sorry. And that's about one-third of our water system and the same length as driving from B.C. ferries to the Canary and Port, the North Pacific Canary. As stated in the last slide, the report identified just over 26 kilometers of high-priority water mains that require immediate replacement in order to mitigate the risk of complete failure. The provincial government stepped up right away with financial assistance, while the federal government told us that they could not participate at this time. However, they allowed us to enter into a grant program, which meant that we could go after sewer and storm money as well. But this delayed us spending the provincial funds. So we worked closely with their team and spent time in Ottawa advancing the concerns and made application. The PRPA joined us arm-in-arm in this initiative as we both felt the concerns for the importance of our water infrastructure for renewal of the community and economic growth. In anticipation of a positive funding announcement, the city developed the Water Distribution Renewal Project. This project seeks to complete the design and replacement of the mains through a progressive approach in critical infrastructure corridors. These corridors are identified in the attached map here and will be prioritized for replacement over the next three to four years. So as you can see in this slide, all of our hard work paid off, and we're able to secure $77.2 million in the federal DMAT fund, $65 million from the province, $45 million in approved city borrowing, and $13 million in underground utilities from the roundboat. All of this equals a staggering $200 million. On the last two, we are very thankful to the residents of Prince Rupert for stepping up and recognizing the importance of renewal. We would not have received the $77.2 million without contributing our share of $45 million as matching funds. Lastly, the $13 million for the roundboat does include the utilities under the roadway, which is included in the 26.2 kilometers. So that reduces the overall burden of the project and has enormous benefit to our community. Now, the part everyone is going to see, the actual work getting completed. We are completing right now the Shawatlin Road section. This is the most important piece of pipe in our infrastructure. This is the pipe that brings water to our community and is the single one that does that, from the dam to our reservoir. Without this pipe, our community will not have water. Next, we will establish the next set of corridors for year one. Once these are established, we will release them in the next few weeks, and then we can start prepping the neighborhoods. Now, once construction starts, it will be chaotic. The construction will be disruptive, and it will be messy. There will be traffic rerouting in key areas, and we will be working with transit and emergency services. We will also be looking at things like garbage routes, disability assistance, and fire protection. However, we believe the short-term pain is worth the long-term gain as the long-term benefit of this with new pipes under the roadways means we do not have to do future maintenance. So just a quick note that we're not only completing one of the biggest infrastructure renewal projects in Canada, but we're also working on the RCMP building, Outfall L, the landfill closure, Overland Raw Water Line, 670 Bridge upgrades, Public Works Building, SCADA communication towers, and wetland treatment. Overall, this represents about $60 million worth of renewal. So with this and the infrastructure replacement program, the city will be seeing between $250 and $300 million worth of renewal over the next five years in fully funded projects. That is massive for a community of just over 12,000 people. This is a springboard bringing us forward approximately 100 years of deferred maintenance in just five. We are very lucky to have secured this funding. So let's go back to this slide now. In addition to the $300 million in renewal projects we have in the next five years, we still have a long way to go. This slide shows that we need new fire hall, water treatment, bridge replacements, wastewater treatment, new building assets, more pipe infrastructure renewal, and a new ferry. So you can see that we're not out of the woods yet, but we feel after this, we will have caught up a lot, and we need to make sure that we don't get in this position again. That is why we're implementing new asset management policies and keeping us on track for scheduled renewal. So we are excited to dive in and complete this work. And like I said, it will get messy before it gets better. However, lastly, what I do want to end my section with is keep your eye out for signage that your street may be next. Download the city app to keep up to date with notifications. Review the website for any updates, and follow us on social media. Thank you, and I will now introduce my colleague Corinne Bombin, our Chief Financial Officer, who will be speaking about possible ways to finance these needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Well, I can honestly say the last time I was on the stage, there was a whole lot more singing and dancing. So hello, everyone. The $450 million challenge before us is clearly significant. Net of possible grants, this means remaining costs are approximately $325 million. Our current revenues are not enough to address this gap. If we were to fund this debt through, all of this through debt, it would require an additional $20 million per year to pay the annual repayment. We also have an obligation to allocate funding towards asset management, as Richard just mentioned, which makes up requirements on all of our grant applications now. This amount is approximately $8 million per year. And for those that don't know, asset management essentially is a savings renewal plan where the city sets aside a certain amount of funds every year towards known future capital replacement costs, the same way that a homeowner will save for replacing a roof. When taking all of these into account, so those two numbers, the total annual shortfall is approximately $28 million. Clearly, we need additional revenues to finance renewal and asset management. Following are some initiatives we are focusing our energies on to increase sustainable and stable revenues to meet the infrastructure gap. The first is addressing the taxation cap that applies to the export-import industries. The province, a little history lesson. The province brought in rules in 2004 to incentivize trade growth. To do this, they promised export-import companies that the property tax rate would not increase above a maximum. To accomplish this, the city's major industrial tax rate was then cut nearly in half in 2004. The province paid a grant to make up for the taxes no longer collected. We still get that grant, but it only covered the difference experienced in 2004, adjusted for inflation, which has been historically low. Industrial businesses do not increase in value like your house does. Their assessment depreciates at a rate generally higher than the inflation rate. If the maximum rate didn't exist, we would just adjust the rate to offset the depreciation of the assessed value and at least keep the same amount of taxes. But with the maximum rate and a lower assessed value, we calculate less taxes from year to year on export-import terminals, unless they build something taxable or the land value goes up. The city's costs do not decrease. So what we lose through the province's rules, we need to make up through either service decreases or higher taxes on other property owners. Our concern with the tax cap is not a reflection on the industries. We know qualifying export-import industries are reinvesting, like Trigon and DP World, for example. We understand that they would like certainty. What we are trying to point out to the province is there is unfairness to the provincial rules where depreciation in industrial assessment is transferring the tax burden onto other tax classes, creating uncertainty for everyone else. The province can have their incentive program. What we want is to collect what we otherwise would have charged if the rule change didn't exist. This means an additional $2 million per year in the budget at the city-controlled major industrial tax rate on existing properties. There is a lot of potential trade investment on the horizon. Should these projects come to fruition, there will be further new taxes available to contribute towards our funding gap. Estimates are $16 million of new taxes if all projects go ahead. If we are also successful in our fairness objective for the tax cap program mentioned in the previous slides, this $16 million in new taxation would then move up by another $6 million. These revenues are essential for addressing our infrastructure gap. Of course, there is always the possibility that these gateway growth investments don't proceed. Another area we are focusing on is the payment in lieu of taxes received by the city. Government-owned property pays taxes in the form of a payment in lieu of taxes, PILT for short. We have a disagreement with the value of the Port Authority properties, which was reduced, which has reduced, sorry, the amount of PILT the city receives. As an example, port appraisers have valued vacant Ridley Island land at 8% of the value assessed initially in the period between 2018 to 2021. The overall drop in values of the Port Authority's overall property holdings are now approximately 60% to 65% less than the original assessment. The city addressed the drop in PILT in Budget 2023, where 4% of the 12.5% tax increase was a direct result of the drop in PILT. This represents the recent history of PILT received by the city. As mentioned, we are appealing the drop in PILT to the city. A resolve and reinstatement of the near $1 million no longer collected will contribute to the revenue needs identified. Note that if all the port's growth occurs, then the PILT is no longer an issue because the city would be collecting taxes instead. It should be noted that a reduction in PILT to the city also affects the District of Port Edward, since we have a tax-sharing agreement with, for Ridley Island. We are thrilled with the recent announcement of the Resource Benefits Agreement. Right now, it is for five years, and we need to continue to push to make that permanent. Since having stable, long-term funding will enable us to plan to address our infrastructure replacement, our estimates are the current agreement will result in approximately another $5 million in each of the next five years. Another funding opportunity we are focused on is the Federal Port Stipend. This stipend represents the Port Authority's payment of a percentage of its annual revenue to the federal government. We are advocating to have this amount returned as an annual grant back to the city from the federal government, considering we host the port activities. Historically, this has been approximately $3 million annually. The funds are a small drip in the federal coffers. However, it's a significant amount for the city. All of these combined efforts can contribute towards our annual revenue need identified earlier, but it doesn't get us the whole way. What this shows is we need the stars to align on all of our and the port's initiatives to address the infrastructure gap challenge. Thank you, and now I would like to introduce my colleague Paul Mendetelli, the Director of Transportation and Economic Development.
Thank you, Corinne, and good evening, everybody. At the Economic Development Office, we oversee major development proposals for Watson Island and Lot 444, as well as the day-to-day operations of Watson Island Seaport. I also look after the Cow Bay Marina, support and attract local cruise industry, as well as work with supporting small business through partnership and the Chamber of Commerce and Community Futures. Regularly fielding calls from folks looking to open businesses in Prince Rupert and from industry proponents looking to develop export and import projects in our area. So I'd like to take an opportunity to remind our businesses in the community about the many incentive programs that we've been put into place over the last few years. First off, we have our Business Facade Improvement Program, which is currently open and offers grants for facade beautification. City Council has put into place a downtown revitalization tax exemption program to encourage redevelopment and revitalization in our communities downtown. In this winter, City Council also passed regulations relaxing parking requirements in a set area of the downtown core. Understanding, of course, the physical and economic constraints to providing off-street parking in Prince Rupert's downtown city core, the parking-specified area waives off-street minimum parking stall requirements for new and upgraded commercial and mixed-use developments. And lastly, the city also waived all development permit variants, OCP amendments, rezoning and building permit fees in the downtown core. The fee waivers also apply to any development in Prince Rupert that results in a new housing unit. These programs currently run till the end of the year, at which point council may reconsider, consider them to extend the waivers. And good old Watson Island. As people are likely aware, Watson Island is a former pulp mill site that became inherited to the city through tax sale. It sat vacant for a number of years with no activity. When the city had to take it over, it was a significant financial and environmental liability. Since then, we have taken down the pulp mill, removing and recycling 95% of what was on the island, including the pulping chemicals. And we've been redeveloping the site in phases. For those of you that aren't aware, we actually have four tenants on site right now. We have Pembina, which is the obvious anchor tenant. They operate a propane facility, and that's been operating since 2021. We have Belori, which is another tenant on site with an intermodal and container handling logistics company. There's Horizon North, and they operate a worker camp on the island that is available to house transient workforces that come to Prince Rupert for major projects. And finally, SGS Canada operates a propane test lab facility that handles both AltaGas and Pembina's propane shipments. So at the end of the day, like we asked, well, what do these tenants do for our community? This slide provides some highlights of critical investments that have offset costs that would have otherwise been at the taxpayer's cost, as well as previous holding costs on the island versus the revenue it's generating today. Through the use of Legacy Inc., these lease revenues are transferred back to the municipality through a dividend. The dividends finance one-time investments so that residents don't have to. Some of what the dividends have gone towards are identified on the screen, but there are much more. At one point, previous holding costs for environmental and security for Watson Island was $1.2 million a year. And now the island generates $4.5 million a year in revenues for Legacy and then paid through dividends to the municipality. We currently have a call-out for an innovative energy project to be developed on either Watson Island or Lot 444, because as you can see, lease revenues help to support our community's capital renewal needs. And that's it for me. So at this point, I will introduce my colleague Methani Pope, Director of Development Services and Planning. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Paul. Let's talk livability above the ground. Community renewal gives us an opportunity to develop a vision for a livable community and a roadmap to help us get there. So over the last few years, we've developed and started various plans and policies to help guide our actions and priorities, including a focus on climate, transportation, parks and recreation, social development, and housing. You can see these plans listed here on this slide. And the goals of these plans and policies is to develop Prince Rupert into a place that its residents and newcomers want to call home today and into the future. Speaking of homes, we know we have a housing problem. The cost of housing has skyrocketed over the last several years for both homeowners and renters. And this is due to hard-to-build on land, our remote location, a need for more skilled tradespeople, as well as very little housing being built over the last 45 years and the anticipated growth from port expansion. The increased costs worsens existing housing problems, including an aging housing stock, meaning homes that are affordable are in poor condition and require additional costs for renovations, a high rental demand, even compared to the average across the province, with a low rental supply, a growing housing, or rather, a growing population who can't afford to rent or buy but don't qualify for subsidized housing, not enough subsidized housing, and a labor shortage, which in turn affects our healthcare, service, and trade industries. Go back to that one. These conditions frame our housing landscape and contribute to housing need. And so in 2022, we looked at our housing need numbers and found that 14.3% of households are paying more than they can afford for their housing, a number that is likely higher now. 14% of households require major repairs, a number that is significantly higher than the average across the province. And 6% of households are overcrowded. And in every way that we measure this housing need, renters fare worse than homeowners. And from 2018 to 2023, the number of people counted as experiencing homelessness doubled from 71 to 145. Due to structural barriers related to colonialism and racism, indigenous peoples are overrepresented among this population. Our assessment also showed that we have gaps in our housing supply. These gaps include accessible housing for seniors and people living with disabilities, multi-unit development for singles, new market housing across the spectrum, rental housing for low- and moderate-income households, housing with support services, and larger units for families. On this slide, you'll see that our assessment also showed that we'll need approximately 5,000 new homes overall by 2030 to meet our current and projected needs. And these timelines will be getting updated this year to look at housing need projections on a 20-year timeline. So what are we doing about this need? Our actions as a city have focused on increasing supply and access to housing, including through actively seeking opportunities to encourage housing development, such as waiving permit and rezoning fees for new housing units until 2025, selling or leasing lots to support housing, such as in the case of the Lacollum Housing Project on 11th Avenue, as well as placing city-owned lots and greenfield sites for sale through Legacy Inc., the city's municipal. city's municipal corporation. We've been working with and supporting housing funding applications, and we are enabling density in our existing neighborhoods without changing their character, including permitting suites across all zones and in all housing types, and responding to provincial requirements for increasing density. But we recognize, too, that supply alone won't address all our housing needs, and so council adopted the Housing Acceleration Plan in 2023 to guide next steps in addressing the gaps that were identified in our housing needs assessment. And we will be continuing to update our housing needs assessment every five years to track our progress towards meeting the housing need in our community. And now it is my pleasure to introduce our new Director of Recreation, Nicole Beauregard.
Good evening. So recreation is more than just facilities. We provide indoor and outdoor health and wellness opportunities for our community to foster physical literacy. So physical literacy is about that motor competence, the fundamental and functional movement patterns that we do in our everyday lives. It's about the motivation and confidence to be active for life and as we age along that spectrum. Ultimately, physical literacy is that gateway to increase physical activity and health, fitness, leisure, and sport activities. Community recreation is often the very first place participants come to try out new activities and make friends, use their imagination, and participate in educational, cultural, and skill development opportunities. As a team, our department in recreation, we oversee the Earl Maw Aquatic Center, Jim Sekoni Civic Center, an arena, sport courts, and fields. Over the next year, we'll be focusing on a few priority areas, as you can see on the slide. We're going to be working with our capital infrastructure and focusing on those urgent and most critical needs within recreation, taking a look at our operations with those three Ss around safety, SAF, and scheduling. We're going to be checking into policy review and applying that recreation, accessibility, and inclusion lens to all those policies, things like the recreation bylaw fees, reviewing the allocation policy, checking in on our service agreements, and updating and connecting with our partners with our School District 52 Joint Use Agreement. And finally, which is really exciting, the future is a recreation master plan, so we can encompass all of our recreation needs for our community. It's also really important that we continue to maintain our certifications and training with our staff. Building our capacity, working together with community partners, is so, so important. So mandatory certifications include things like our power engineering and our ammonia plant that we have to operate safely, our National Lifeguards, first aid, master learning facilitator facilitation training for instructors, as well as maintaining our national coach certification as well for instructors. It's also really important, we do this continued learning all the time, through safety, staff in services, protees, workshops, et cetera. And what I'm really excited about is the community and the engagement and the media, all connected through, which really ultimately is about building relationships with you, the community, our user groups, and within our internal city departments as well. So thank you so, so much. And now it's my pleasure to introduce Rosa Miller, our Director of Corporate and Legislative
Thank you, Nicole. Somebody may have taken my slide notes. Let's see. All right. As a part of my role as the Director of Corporate and Legislative Services, I also oversee the city's bylaw department, as well as coordinate the business of council and provide administrative support and oversight for City Hall. We know a main concern of the community is community renewal overall, and much of that work, sorry, involves bylaw enforcement. We are sharing some information this evening about how the department operates and our goals and objectives over the coming months and year. People have been very clear. They want things cleaned up. Council has heard this, and therefore it is one of our goals and my goal for 2024. The city does have a property maintenance bylaw that outlines requirements for exactly that, property maintenance. This bylaw is available on the city's website, should you wish to read all 12 pages. The intent of the bylaw isn't to be punitive, but as a means of working with residents to make and keep our community beautiful. The bylaw notes easy things that we can do, like general exterior house maintenance, garbage pickup in and around our yards and boulevards, keeping our lawns in check, no overgrown yards, weeds 10 feet high, removing graffiti as soon as it happens. What we don't want to do is a remedial action order. This is when we have to bring properties to council for just that. A remedial action order gives council the ability, under the community charter, to enforce action, to remove a hazardous condition, or declare a nuisance and remove that nuisance. The community charter essentially sets out the authority or rules for municipalities. A remedial action process is not something that council takes lightly. Staff prepare a report and provide that report to council so that council may resolve to address the situation by way of resolution. The community charter outlines specific requirements for remedial action order, which includes delivering a notice to the registered owner of the property. Going to council for a remedial action order is a final effort where other attempts to encourage an order to clean up their property or remove a nuisance has failed. Let's see if this works. Oh, Marco, could you start the video? Perfect. So a very public remedial action order, and one that many waited for, was the Angus Apartments. This removal was not something that was taken lightly. Before the fires, these were people's homes. However, the state of the building and the lack of maintenance by the owner made it impossible to do anything but take it down. This remedial action process can be very lengthy. This one, although it did take some time, and perhaps too long for some, was completed sooner than it would have usually have been, given the process was made easier by the city becoming the unwilling owner by virtue of a tax sale. This removal was a significant effort by staff, and specifically public work staff, many contractors, the fire department, and the RCMP. We now look forward to seeing some positive things happening with this property. Many of us were born here. We all live here. I was raised here. I chose to raise my kids here. And at the end of the day, we all want a clean and safe community where we can take pride in where we live. We know that economic circumstances vary, but elbow grease is free. Thank you. Rob?
Well, folks, we're coming up on an hour, and we hope to have reached this point in about an hour, so that's good. We've given you a lot of information, and so I'm going to try and summarize what I think are some of the important takeaways for you. You may have other important takeaways, but I'm going to do that. And after I'm done, then Mayor Ponce is going to come up and give his summary, then we're going to have some time for questions and answers. So, takeaways, in not an order of priority. You've listened to six presentations from our directors. You get an appreciation of the complexity of running a city. We do a lot of different things. I hope that you appreciate just how well this city has done in raising funds for this $200 million project. We would not be able to fix our water sewer system without having achieved the grants that we did. So that's something to celebrate, for sure. I hope that, having listened to the presentations, you have a confidence in this team. I certainly do. We are being served very well in this city. And of course, a really big one, of course, is our infrastructure challenge. Our infrastructure needs renewal. We've been working on this. We have a new dam that costs us almost $25 million. The RCMP building, which is mandated by the federal government, is going ahead, and we've raised significant funds for water and sewer lines. We still have $450 million of unfunded end-of-life infrastructure and buildings, which will require about $28.5 million a year to fund. And we have a strategy to do that. Chief among those actions in that strategy is getting a resolve on the port tax cap. Frankly, I don't think that we can get there without getting a satisfactory result, because it will make all the difference for us. But in addition to that, resolving the pill payments, getting the federal government to leave some of the wealth that's generated here in this community, that's $3 million that they receive, which would make a difference for us. You've heard about the funds that Watson Island brings in. We're working on building those. And absolutely, the development of the port is central to our success as well. We need to see the port develop and be successful, and we support them in that. So while pipes are not sufficient, they are critical. But in addition to pipes, housing, recreation, economic development, and quality of life actions, initiatives are central to our strategic plan. I do hope you give that a read, and I'm going to hand this over to Mayor Ponto to wrap up, and then he will emcee the question-and-answer period.
There we go. All right. Well, I'm going to do a little bit like Dr. Buckin did. I hope you get a sense of the size and scale of the challenges, but more importantly, the size and scale of the successes. This water sewer distribution renewal project is going to dwarf what's being proposed by almost any other community in Canada. Collecting $77 million out of the DMAT fund? I know it sounds like a lot of money, and it's hard to get your head around. The whole fund for all of Canada is $1 billion. If you divided that evenly between 10 provinces, it'd be $100 million for British Columbia. We got $77 million for us. Like, it's just, the scale is hard to comprehend, the level of success. If you look at this, and you look, we're there. I firmly believe we're at a crossroads. We're now, six years before we hit 2030, and that whole next 2030 and beyond, what's that going to be? Is it going to be more flatness across? Is it going to be growth? Is it going to be downward? I think the things we're doing right now today will set that direction. And it's also the things that have been done by previous councils, previous administrations to get us to this place. There's no point in replacing all the water pipes if you haven't got a decent dam to hold the water back and so that when you need it, it's there to draw on. That work was done by the previous council, and I'm sure there's going to be a ton of work left over for the next council, and the next council, and the next council. This group is really committed to making a difference there, to change the trajectory and get it going back up again. And I believe it's completely within our grasp. I think the other thing, though, when you look at that, is, to me, it just screams that the city of Prince Rupert and the port of Prince Rupert desperately need each other. If the container terminal hadn't opened, if the new terminals that opened hadn't opened, that population would have kept declining. We need each other. There is no success in Prince Rupert if the port of Prince Rupert is not successful, and there's no success for the port of Prince Rupert if the city of Prince Rupert is not successful. And I don't know whether you caught it in some of the slides, the port of Prince Rupert has been working hand-in-glove with us in every one of those meetings to get all of that money. It has been a song that we're able to sing together, to say that this not only matters to a town of 12,000 people, it matters to British Columbia, it matters to Canada. And that's a message that's reverberating, it's being heard. So I want to acknowledge the port and their effort. And even as we identify some of the issues that need to be solved around financing, we're more aligned with the port than separate on those issues. They understand we need to be made whole, too. And so we're working collaboratively on most of those issues. The second thing I'd like to acknowledge is that we've had incredible help from our MLA and our MP. I cannot describe to you the work that's being done behind the scenes to position us so that when we get to meetings, people already know the cause that we're working on. I had the pleasure, when we had the DMAT announcement down in Victoria, of just carving out a little time, and Jen Rice and Taylor Backrack and myself went and had dinner together. And we talked about all the things we need to keep working on together. That's rare. It's incredibly rare for a community to have both an MP and an MLA that are in positions to actually do something for you, one in government, one part of the government supply agreement, and we need to take full advantage of that while we can. I want to acknowledge the work of all the previous mayor, council that have gone before. It wouldn't have happened without them. And I want to acknowledge my colleagues on council. I can't begin to describe to you what a dream team it is to be able to work together the way we do. It's what enables us to get this work done. I know that if I need to get down to Victoria for a critical meeting, I know that the team back here has got everything covered. And we look out for each other, and we make things happen, and I'm very grateful for the council that you, the community, have put together. But finally, I want to acknowledge this team. They punch so far above their weight. I know there are headhunter calls to each of them, asking them to go to other municipalities, other places. How many of you were born here? Four members of this team were born here, raised here, coming through the public school system. And yeah, yeah, that's rare! And they're really good at what they do. And other municipalities want them, but they're passionate, as is the rest of the team. People are here because they're passionate about changing that. They see an opportunity. It's a high-risk move, I got to tell you. Those are big challenges in front of us. Everybody I've ever talked to in the community is up for it. They're saying, hey, let's go do this. Let's be part of turning that around. It's going to require a lot of you. It's going to require a lot of sacrifice on your part, but I think it can be done. I think that 30 and 40 years from now, when there's a town hall happening like this, they'll be pointing back at us, and they'll be pointing back to the turnaround that happened there. And so with that, I just want to thank you. We're going to open it up to questions, and I know there's a lot of issues happening in the community. I know healthcare is one of them. Your council has taken some real active steps towards that. We've been on top of it and working with the MLA and working with Northern Health, meeting with Minister Dix. And I'm sure it's a concern to you, but it's really not the focus of this evening. We're actually going to be having a meeting on Monday where we're bringing together terminal operators in the port and First Nations and others to see how people who don't have a direct involvement in healthcare can influence the outcome. I saw a great letter from the port today to the premier and Minister Dix, just outlining how critical it is to us doing that turn so that the port of Prince Rupert can be all that Canada needs it to be. So I hope you'll focus your questions on things that you can learn from these folks. And with that, can we have the house lights up? Is there somebody in the room that can do that? Did you notice, I'm sure you noticed, that of all the people on this stage, I'm the only one that can't work the clicker? I swear I was pushing the right button. I swear, I was pushing the right button. All right, there are microphones up front. If you have a mobility issue, we do have a mobile mic that we could, you just sort of throw your hand up. But if you have any questions, don't be shy, come on down to a microphone and ask. Or have we done such a terrific job that you have got every question answered? I got to make a comment as we're passing. One of Pete Lester's daughters is here in the room. Sorry, yeah, Mark. And when you look at that growth era, you can pretty much call that the Peter Lester era. He was the mayor for almost all of that. It's an incredible time. Anyway, councillor, former councillor.
Thank you, Mayor Pond. Could you explain the $13 million for the roundabout, how exactly that money pans out? I didn't quite understand. So the $13 million's going for Second Avenue Water Main?
Yes.
Okay, the whole Second Avenue?
I'm going to get Director Pucci to come up and speak specifically, but one of the opportunities that comes with that is a complete redesign of Second into less a highway and creating more of a city street that we can enjoy. But Director Pucci.
Thank you. So the entire project is approximately $18 million. It's fully funded by the province of British Columbia. It's a roundabout. It starts about at the intersection of Third and McBride, and then goes down, and the roundabout will be just in front of where the courthouse is, and then it will come down sort of into, in front of the liquor store and up a little bit more. So it'll take up quite a bit of room there. So the total project is approximately $18 million, but $13 million of that is devoted to the underground utilities and the sidewalks and things like that. That would have been a cost to the city of Prince Rupert, but again, fully funded by the province.
Okay, thank you.
Come on down, Brian. No. No. Yeah, I don't really, on the way, or before I came here this evening, I had an email from a friend and his wife who were in France just now. And they mentioned the touring they're doing, and the exploration they're doing of France. And Doug Kidd was the one sent the email. And Doug said that this is amazing, the area we're just touring now, is that the buildings are up to 600, 800 years old, and they're still functioning well. And it just occurred to me on the way here, is that we're going through an infrastructure replacement, but what's the lifespan of this replacement? Are we going to have to, are we, are the next generations going to have to go through this again in 100 years, 200 years? So what is the lifespan of what we're talking about with the replacement of our sewage and water plants?
Thank you for the question. So the current lifespan of products today is estimated on paper for 100 years, but that type of product hasn't been in the ground for 100 years, so there's actually no known value of how long PVC product and blueroot product lasts. So at this point, on paper, it lasts 100 years, but it may have to be replaced after, or before or after that, but on paper, it's 100 years.
And I'd just like to add to the answer. You asked, are we going to be faced with this again? Well, our plan is no. Our plan is to actually have good asset management practices in place, so that we stay on top of it, so we're never behind like we are now. Because we're in a precarious position. As Richard said, we were faced with the possibility of our water system collapsing, literally collapsing, which would have devastated this town. Our plan is to have asset management practices and reserves in place, so that it is done on a regular basis, and we never get behind again.
And I don't think we've drawn attention to it, but that piece of pipe that's there, I don't know if people can ever come up and see it, but it's so riddled with holes. It's an actual piece of pipe we pulled out of the ground. It's been sitting on our council table, if you've watched council meetings at all, it sits there as a reminder to all of us what's at stake here. And one of the reasons we've delayed water treatment is we lose about 40% of the water that enters our system through all of those microcracks and fissures all throughout the system. It costs a lot of money to do the full final treatment, where you filter the water and get it clean the way we'd love it to be, like clear, without the tannins and stuff. It'd be crazy to spend a lot of money to make really nice water and then just pour it into the ground, right? And so we'll do a lot of the pipes, and then do the final filtration plant. Two daughters of Mayor Lester in the room.
Hey Herb, how's it going?
Good.
Good. You know, I got to congratulate the city staff and the council for doing a great job on getting us all this grant money.
Can you come a little closer to Mike? Sorry, Mike?
Yeah, no problem. And, no, it's great, you guys have done a wonderful job that way. But I guess I got to tell my story, because it's just a little bit disappointing how we, it's so hard to do business in this town. It's almost to a point where it's ridiculous. Like, you know, I'm Mike from Stuck on Designs, been in business probably in this town for about 25 years, lived here for 40. My kids, my wife was born here, my kids have been raised here, I've got grandkids here now. I love this town. But what's really disappointing is that, I guess a few years ago, I guess everybody knows that we had that property on McBride. No one knew that a whole mountain would come through it, and that's what's the matter with that building. And so we moved to Five Corners for a bit, and we had an opportunity to buy a building downtown, and the old shoppers. And so we spent a lot of money fixing up the inside and that, we wanted to do the outside. And I couldn't believe that we had basically compromised, because the colors that we wanted our building was to reflect our logos and kind of stand out who we are. You know, if you look around our place, there was not much being done, absolutely hardly anything being done downtown. And so we went in for a permit to, so we did everything properly, go in for a proper permit to paint our building. And I was told, well, you can have these colors, earth tones. Well, earth tones are pastel, kind of dull, black, white, anyway. We didn't like the colors we were kind of given for the city, so basically, we had to sign off on leaving our building the way it was to have an opening. I couldn't believe that. So anyway, the council might have a different, or the city might have a different opinion or whatever, but they want to make us, like, I agree that, hey, we want to build the town. I know eight years ago, didn't we look like Flintstone Land, where we were painting purple, pink, with all this stuff? It was crazy. And now, I'm restricted to the paint colors that we can do. I know some clients that have waited up to three months to get just a sticker on their window. Took three months to get a sticker on their window, which was way within the limits of the city, but it took three months to get that passed. A sticker. On a window, a business window, a logo. It's so silly. If you do things by permit, they tie you up with red tape. It's crazy. If you just do it, it's okay, because the same time I was negotiating this, trying to get my building painted, there was a purple building painted, a pink building, and a black building. And I brought that up, and they said, well, that's the bylaw officer's problem. He has to go out there and enforce this, but he's too busy. I said, so if I do everything properly, I have to fight for the color of my building? That's ridiculous. Anyway, just on other things, I think the business people know what to do with their buildings. I think we're respectful to say, look, if the lights are too bright, or something silly like that, yes, pull us in. But if we want to sign or something, make it look good, I think it looks a lot better than a lot of the empty lots down there, and a lot of the buildings, because people won't paint their building because of the restrictions. Really? Now, the other thing, filling holes. There's incentives and all that to fill holes, but I don't know. I know we talked about this privately, Herb, and that, about an AMW coming to town and questions about the brown and orange being not the right colors. I think somebody heard those rumors. The other thing is, I know the person's actually wanting to fill and build on that block. And I talked to him a couple weeks ago, and he's just ready to pull everything and say, forget it, I'm going to invest somewhere else. Look, I love this town. I want this town to develop. I see all these holes going in. I know you're tearing down buildings, and hopefully, some nice stuff goes up. But unless it's a government building or something like that, businesses just get the red tape, and I just feel like, it's just stupid. Herb, we talked about it before, get a committee of business people together, and let's discuss this. Okay? Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. And I don't know if it's set up yet, but I actually talked with Dr. Buckin about it, and said, there's three people you need to have a meeting with. And I know you're in the process of setting that up, because I want them to hear firsthand from you what the challenge points are, and if they can be addressed, let's get them addressed. Yeah. That meeting will happen. I don't want to make this go longer than you want it to go. I also don't want to close it off and cut anybody off. So if you think you're coming forward, come on forward.
Sorry, there was a hand up over here, so I was just going to bring the mic over, if that's okay?
Okay, perfect, thanks. Yeah, go ahead, yeah, go ahead, and then we'll...
I'm Toby. I make no secret that I'm from Toronto, and there was a little bit of a culture shock from when I came here, that when I left Toronto, they had already gone through a whole lot of work to make the buildings accessible. And that's a very important thing to me. I'd like to make sure that people can reach the washrooms and the restaurants, the front door of the city hall, and be able to get to where they want to go. I was wondering what we can do over the next five years to address that.
I'm fighting a cold, and my ears are quite plugged. I didn't quite catch the question.
The question was just regarding making Prince Rupert more accessible.
Good question, absolutely. And the city has recently established an accessibility committee to address that broad question. So we're waiting for some of that work to be done, and then we can see what we can do with it. As a general rule, we don't get to go to existing buildings and say, make changes. It's when there's a renovation or a new building that comes in that we get to say, here are the accessibility standards. But it doesn't mean that we can't work with the community to, where there are particular issues, to try to, you know, get those fixed. It's on our radar, it's one of the things, one of the many things that we do, which wasn't discussed tonight.
I'm a little shorter. Maybe I should take that microphone. Sure. Take this microphone.
What happens when everybody's phone goes off?
Yeah, everybody's phone did.
It's hilarious. Go ahead.
Yeah, so, you know, I, it was nice to hear from Stuck on with that, that was quite something, too. You know, I've lived here my whole life, too. Pamela Vanderweal, been here a long time, worked for the city, or worked for the Prince Rupert Port Authority for a lot of years, too. One of the things I, one of the things that comes to my attention a lot in regards to these city lines, we'll start there. You know, they bust, city comes along, comes and fixes them, and the minute the water goes on, then the property owner's line busts, and then they got to fix it. I've experienced it three times in my home, four feet of water underneath. One of the things that we talk about are all of the costs to the city, and what the city has to come up with. And one of the things that isn't mentioned is about the homeowners, our wages. Does any of that go up? We all incur the costs. We all incur that our homes are on pilings as well, too. We have infrastructure that needs to keep up. I lost my whole siding of my foundational wall from three breaks from the city. And I had to fill in all those holes. I asked and phoned even to the City Works, can they please come and just drop off a small bit of a load, so I could fill the whole side of my hole there? And I was told, no. I was told, no, they couldn't come and do that. I had to go through my insurance company first. And then, once I'd gone through my insurance company, then the city would be able to reimburse me for it, but I had to put the money out for it and wait for that insurance to come through. I thought, are you kidding me? I went through this three times. I had businesses in Prince Rupert hear my story and come and help me when my own city wouldn't, from City Works that had dirt to fill my holes, that my whole retaining wall came down for because of the broken pipe. Want to talk about my wage? We can talk about everybody else's wages that don't move either. They don't end up increasing with any of it. And as homeowners, we go through that, and I'm not even speaking for senior citizens yet. They're on a pension that gets taxed, they've got to pay the full load for their prescriptions, and groceries are going up, and they're told to stay on their homes, because they've got nowhere else to go, because they're full. They've got resources that are cut off in Rupert, and they're being stuck in those positions. That breaks my heart, because living here my whole life, I had a cleaning business, and I know a lot of them, and I am hearing their stories. And that's one huge factor in Prince Rupert, never mind the housing for people that we have for rental occurrences here, when we can't even take care of our own senior citizens. We don't even have a program implemented to even go to their houses, which is something that I'm currently looking at, because I think it's really important to be there for our citizens who are aging here in Prince Rupert. They don't have the money or the infrastructure to fix up their homes. They don't have that. And for some of us that have had our full, long-term positions federally taken away, that we were long-term employed for, like me from the Prince Rupert Port Authority, that I got terminated for a job for no reason why, for not getting a vaccine, now living on a wage that I can't even, that I'm barely trying to support myself with, with the inflation. I'm not the only one, there's a lot of us in Rupert going through this. And it's really pathetic to realize that none of that is being addressed. These are real issues, too. Sure, we have a federal government can pull out, what, what did we say that number was? Six over 600 billion? Wouldn't they be crying a river if DP World, if Coal Terminal, if the Grain Terminal, if all of these proponents, every one of their workers decided to stop to go to work and say, hello, federal government, we're not paupers here, and our city shouldn't have to beg? They use our back to make all of this money? I'm passionate when I speak. There's a little bit of anger there, because I hear it from this community, too. I'm not ashamed to talk about it, because it means so much to all of us, including you and every one of you sitting up there. But at what point are people going to be heard for this? We had doctors working on a plan to get 12 doctors here from Africa, they've even spoken about it, but they got turned down by Jennifer Rice and Northern Health. Let's speak about that, but yet, somebody's going to meet with them. Let's just get real about all of these different types of issues that are happening in Prince Rupert, because we actually do trust everybody in the position that they stand in.
So I appreciate your comments. And one of the ways we're successful at what we're doing is by focusing in on the things that we control. If we start getting out into other people's lanes, we become far less effective at the core responsibilities that are ours. We need to deliver you clean, clear drinking water. That's our job.
We get it, but we're all together.
Right? No, hang on. And so you've raised a whole lot of issues, and I wish the MP and I wish the MLA were here, there's a lot of those that come within their mandate. It would be great for them to do a forum like this, maybe they will, I don't know. But you raised at the very beginning, an issue that was directly involved with the municipality, and that is, when your property's damaged, because one of our... because one of our pipes bursts, and there's a number of people that happen, and then you're told to go to the insurance process. Can anybody speak to that?
Yeah, so as Director of Operations, so when infrastructure breaks and it affects a homeowner or the property, then the first line is to go to insurance. And that is because that's what needs to happen in order for us to pay out or for us to do what needs to be done. It needs to have an assurance look at it for that. So we don't just go and give gravel. It all has to be accounted for and charged, and so we can charge it back through insurance. That's the process that we use.
Yeah. Just some of that stuff just doesn't make sense to me. Like, there's a hole like 100 inches of paint on his building. But there's like three little holes that need to be filled now. He's got them all in the rest, and I was exhausted using a molder.
Yeah, I mean, I appreciate it, but that's just our policy, and unfortunately, we have to go by that. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hello. Check, hello, hello. First of all, I would like to say, my name is Amber Sidoo. And people that don't know me, I'm born and raised. Love my life in Prince Rupert. I've seen my family move. I've seen friends move, and I'm still here. Thought never crossed my mind, there's no way I'd give this up for the world, unless I don't get good healthcare. Then I may consider moving. And just to touch on a little bit about what Pam just mentioned there, I know we're not supposed to be talking about this here, but I need to voice my concerns. I know I speak for a lot of people, because since a couple of weeks ago, I started my little mission on finding out why all of a sudden there's a shortage of doctors when no one's left, and why is the emergency room closed? The doctors were all still here. There might have been a couple on spring break or whatever the excuse I was getting, but there's no reason for that to happen. It's never happened before until two months ago. So then I think, "Well, jeez, what happened two months ago, then?" Like, why all of a sudden am I hearing eight doctors are leaving? Then the emergency room closes, and then it closes the next day, and the next day? Somebody's pissed the doctors off. And through my little investigative reporting, I find that what I'm being told from reliable sources is, part of it is Northern Health. And I'm actually going to quote what one of the doctors said to me when I asked, "Hey, why are you guys all leaving at the same time?" Random doctor in the elevator at the hospital one day. He said, "Well, if someone took a dump on your head every day, would you stay?" And I just replied back to him, "Well, thanks for letting me know." You confirmed what I already thought, which it was Northern Health, number one. Number two, Jennifer Rice, I don't know who spoke to that, but she's not saying very nice things directly to them. And what's that? Something for me? I'm very angry, very angry about that whole situation. But I just wanted to voice my concerns on that. A comment with what Mike was talking about, and how tough it is to do business here. I'm not a business owner, but I've dealt with the retail and public for my whole working life. And it's common knowledge that it's hard to deal with the city of Prince Rupert when it comes to business. Why don't we ever get a Canadian Tire? Or why don't we ever get, like, you know, Costco would be great or something along those lines, and we never get it. And the things that I hear, call it Prince Rumor or whatever you like, something needs to be done. Why are we not expanding? We're talking about the port being busy. I'm seeing people on the other side of it that aren't working, that are looking for part-time jobs that have applied with me, and I've hired, because they're not getting enough work out there. So there's still room for a lot more change in that way here. And... I didn't write it all down. But yeah, let's just get the healthcare fixed and know that there's a lot of pissed-off people out here about that.
Listen, I hear you, right? And council hears you. We were all over it, the potential emergency room closures back in January, because we were starting to hear the rumors, and we were, you know, trying... We thought the worst thing that could happen, quite frankly, when I go to my wonderful population graph and wanting to go up, is people look at, there's eight hubs that people look at. You know, can I get a job? Can I get a house? Will there be decent schools for my kids? You know, is there clean, clear drinking water? You know, roads? Is there an airport that I can get out? And all of those things. But one of the key questions they ask is, you know, what's the healthcare like? People... And so we thought the worst thing that could happen is that we be the ones that create the headline, right? So we were doing it as best we could behind the scenes, but putting pressure on, writing all the way up to the premier and saying, "Look, this thing looks like it's coming, and it looks like it's serious." And the worst thing that could happen to Prince Rupert is, we want to go up, is having any headline that says the emergency room in Prince Rupert is closed. Well, you know, regrettably, it happened. It became public. And it became a news story across the province. And so, you know, I'm talking about purely us trying to get, what we're trying to get done, done, and the impact on that. But then, quite apart from that, there's the real-life impact on people, right?
Exactly.
And it's unacceptable. We cannot have Canada's third-largest port being successful if there is not reliable, round-the-clock emergency room access and family doctors available to people in Prince Rupert. And so, as much as I hate getting distracted from pipes, I really do, because there's enough work for us to do on pipes, on the stuff that we need to get done. And on answering Mike's questions, we've got to, we'll deal with that, okay? And, but, like I said, on Monday morning, I've asked all First Nations, all terminal operators, "I want the port of Prince Rupert." "I want to hear from people on the impact on their lives and the impact on their operations." And we want to strategize around, we're not going to take over healthcare, but we want to strategize around on what we as a community could do by coming together, whether it's around recruitment or whatever that might be. I don't know what the answer's going to be, but it matters. Believe me, just because I say I don't want to lose a lot of time talking about it, it really matters.
Thank you very much for that. And I meant to start off with that I was pleasantly surprised, because I came here so angry about that, that to sit here and to listen to the presentation, I was like, "Wow." Everything was so good, and I appreciate each and every one of you and our council members, and I'm a big fan of yours. So I'll leave it at that.
My turn.
Hi.
Hi, Herb. My name's Ralph Wick. Born and raised in Rupert. I left for 14 years after I graduated from high school, but I came back in 2002, just as the pulp mill was closing down. First of all, I mean, thanks to staff and council for everything that you're doing to address the issues that we have. But more than anything, Herb, thank you for stepping back into the deep end of the pool again. You know, you were here doing these tunnels 20 years ago, and we're still faced with a lot of the issues that we were dealing with then. I mean, we've acquired Watson Island, and the container port has been built in a great part because of the work that you did back in those days. But I really hope that you can see success with this. You know, what I see from the presentation from everyone tonight, it looks like we're on the right track. I mean, we have a ways to go, but I hope we're not here 20 years from now talking about this again. Secondly, the 2030 Plan, or the redesigned Rupert Plan, I mean, I sat in here a couple of years ago, and there was a talk about, you know, "This is how we're going to redesign our community." Uptown, Midtown, Marina District, and whatnot. And each of those areas had certain components that were going to, how they were going to be designed. So I guess I have a question on how that's going to roll out over the next few years. I didn't really have a concern about it until, and I shouldn't say concern, but the first project that I hear of after this presentation was planned or announced was that a low-income seniors' housing development was planned for Third and McBride, which that area was earmarked for something different. And I'm like anybody else, I want to see housing here, but that plan, 2030 Plan, had housing in the Midtown District. So how is that going to roll out? And are we going to stick to that plan going forward?
I'm going to refer to planners, but I'll just give you my thoughts on that. First of all, thank you for your kind comments. I've got to tell you, I'm having the time of my life. I'm so glad you gave me a chance to come back. I, what we're doing, I'm just passionate about what we're doing, and I'm passionate about the team of people that I get to do that with. So thank you for that. The plan, let me give you a little bit of a hint of, I think, where we're at, and then I'd love the planners to talk to that. I think where we're at right now, as we round the bend and hopefully get going up, we're seeing the very first shoots of the 2030 Plan. The very first shoots. They're small. It's like when you put in seeds in your grass, and you keep going out and looking to see if anything is... And the new RCMP building is part of that, okay? It's a first shoot. The ILWU Hall is a shoot that's coming out of the ground, something new. First really nice, new construction. I'm hoping that the credit union, and I certainly don't want to put them on the spot, but they've got plans for the hole there that they created, and I'm hoping the credit union, we see something emerging there. I honestly believe that when the roundabout is done and we see what we can create there, I think there's going to be a focal piece of art in the center of it, and you're going to come down McBride, you're going to come down Second Avenue. You're going to see one of the most substantial architectural features in our community, which is the courthouse. You'll actually see the courthouse. And that whole area of town. And then, as the pipes get replaced down Second Avenue, and we replace a four-lane highway with a city streetscape. And so you start to see these things coming. We are talking to people who are interested in doing projects in and around the town. None of them have come to fruition. Huge challenges, raising money with the interest rates, the way they are getting labor to build projects, huge. Getting financing at all. One of the first questions that people are asked when they go to the bank to finance is, "Well, how did the last three projects do?" "Oh, well, we'd be the first." Bankers don't want to be pioneers, right? And tell me how the last three projects did, how'd they work out? So it's huge challenges. But that blueprint that was created is one of the reasons I talk about 2030 and beyond. I think Lee, I've had these conversations with him. He says he wishes he named it the 2050 Plan. You know, it takes longer than you hope, right? So I think 2030 is actually the launching time. But the meat and bones of that plan are solid. And I think they will serve us going... You know, he'll make a little exception here, a little exception there to let the thing go, but the basis of the plan, I think, is really solid. Planners.
The official community plan builds in a great deal of flexibility in terms of the land uses within the three areas of downtown. Housing, for example, is allowed in each of them. It's encouraged in each of them, and some significant density. And we've been discussing with council other ways of making things, you know, more flexible. So how will it roll out? It's difficult to get developers to come here right now. You know, and after 2019, when Vision 2030 was rolled out, we had to deal with COVID, and that stopped a lot of interest at the time. We have worked hard reaching out to developers down south. We've had a number come up here. We've reached out to Canadian Tire. We've told A&amp;W that we'll find a way to make it work for them. We are approaching this very flexibly, and if we have to change our guidelines where it's reasonable to do that, that's something that's on the table. So, you know, how will it roll out? There's a little bit of investment here and there that's principally government-driven. For it to really roll out, industry has to see that there's money to be made out here and that they're not distracted down south in order to bring in people from a way to do a lot of the development. And in the meantime, we encourage. And while I hear the issue with the paint, you know, that speaks to, you know, maybe some of council's guidelines and their community plan need to be amended, and it's more flexibility. You know, I hear that. We are approaching this with flexibility. We have gone beyond what any other municipality has gone, really, in terms of encouraging. We have told them, and this is now, we're probably year three or so of a program where council says, "You don't pay for a building permit. You don't pay for a rezoning. You don't pay for a development permit. You don't pay for a development variance permit in the downtown area. We want you to come." And if you build, there's a revitalization tax exemption, which means that the increase in value that you put in, you'll get a tax exemption of up to 10 years, depending on what you do, five to 10 years. Those are all things that we're doing to encourage. But industry still has to be willing to invest. And, you know, it is expensive to develop here. You know, will we have some success? We are speaking with, we continue to speak with some folks. I'm, you know, I'm encouraged that within the next 12 to 16 months, we'll see some housing developments occur, begin to occur. And really hopeful that we'll see some commercial. You know, we've spoken with some, and I won't say names, but large-format retail to come here. And they've crunched the numbers and crunched the numbers, and they're still not to the point where they can make a profit because of the cost of construction. And the cost of construction, if anybody's been following that, you know, for the last five years, has been doing this. The cost of living, the cost of goods and services, has been doing that. Hard for people to make decisions, investment decisions, in the context of their costs going up exponentially. So it's a volatile environment. We're trying to approach it in the most supportive way that we can. And frankly, when people come to town, they're blown away by how we're willing we are to work with them.
Great. Thank you. I see one person making... Come, go ahead. I was, no, no. Go ahead. I was going to wrap up, but there's people coming.
I just have a quick question. We saw that the buildings on Second just came down. I'm wondering if you can tell us what the plan is for that space now? If you're planning a building there, or what's it going to be turning into?
Are we talking about Angus?
Yeah.
Well, the city's become the owner of that through tax sale. We will have it up for sale. We want somebody to develop it. The city's not a developer. The city doesn't have the money to develop. We are faced with a big price tag just to deal with our infrastructure. But we have land, and we're willing to work with folks that want to develop.
Come on down, Donna.
I came to council a couple of years ago about...
Can you come closer?
I don't even... I came to council a couple of years ago regarding the grass and growth on our curbs and in our drains, and, you know, made a pitch of cleaning up our curbs so our city would look presentable. And I was told that we couldn't afford it. And then I was also told that it is the property owner who needs to clean to the curb. So I want to know, in the last two years, what have you done to educate the homeowners and the people who are renting their places that that is their duty? Because right now, from two years ago, we now have dirt and grass covering the things. We have alder trees growing out of the sidewalks. Thank you.
Thanks for that. So what we have done is with our communications managers, tried to roll out messaging to people about this. What we can also do is contact the homeowner. We can send them a letter. We can go to their house. And if they choose to not do it, then we'll do it for them, and they'll send them the bill. It is a complaint-driven process. Please don't all rush out to do complaints tonight. But if we get a complaint about a property, we have to deal with it. But it has to be handled. But if we get a complaint about a property, we have to deal with it, but it has to be complaint-driven. We can't just arbitrarily go out and pick someone and decide to do it, or we could be held liable with all kinds of legal rules. But it is complaint-driven. If there is a property that you see that needs to be dealt with, please send a note, please send an email, please call bylaw, please call me, and we will endeavor to get it cleaned up because I agree with you, there's a lot of overgrowth on the trees, on the sidewalks, on the roadways, and it makes it very difficult to move around.
I don't know, is that mic working now?
I have no idea. It seems like, I'm not good with public speaking, so excuse me. But with trying to get the town to look nicer, I want to know what the plans are for litter and the litter control of this town because it's everywhere and it doesn't seem like anyone's doing anything about it. There's trash in our backyards, there's trash in our hiking areas, there's trash on the sides of the roads. What's going on with that?
You would think that would be the easiest problem in the world to fix, wouldn't you? Like, just clean up after yourself, right? I don't know. Go ahead.
Thank you for the question. So depending on where the trash is, if it's on public property and like-
It's everywhere.
It's everywhere?
Everywhere.
Okay. So there's bylaws associated with property owners that we can go after through complaints, but if there are complaints coming forward, like in trails and stuff, then we would have litter pickup happen through Public Works. We do have a downtown litter pickup person that goes around. We do have other areas and other people that go out, but obviously we're not keeping up. And so we can take that away and look at strengthening that. Thank you.
I also have some suggestions because it would be nice if we had more public access to trash bins and recycling so we can, while we're walking around town, easily have places to throw away our things. It would help so much to have them just on sidewalks. There's not enough of them.
That's a great comment. We are, through the new streetscape on Second Avenue, we are increasing the bins and also looking at segregated ones for recycling as well. So during the new Active Transportation Plan and Transportation Plan, Parks Plan, Recreation Plan, we've all noted that and we're looking at those types of bins for the future. We also have compacting bins, we've had a couple of those and we're looking at another one of those as well. So I appreciate those comments and we will take them away.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. And I think the other piece of that is, you know, we've been kind of, you know, the numbers show, we've been in a funk for a while, you know? And it's just time to come out of the funk. We're tearing down the ugly buildings, we're going to ask building owners to fix the graffiti as soon as it gets done. You know, we need to make sure our facilities are clean and cleaned up. It's time. It's time to show some Rupert pride, right? And start believing in ourselves, start believing in where we're going. I just think when people see a mess, they just behave like it's a mess, right? And I think there's part of it that they can just turn around. Anyway, go ahead, sure.
So your honor and staff, obviously the focus of tonight is the pipes. Commend everybody involved to get where we're at. I'm going to have a couple of questions regarding the pipes that I'd like to get answered afterwards because I'll comment on some of the city items as well. I really thought with the delays of getting the federal money that I would come here tonight and I would see- Anyway, the hope was we'd see some of that. And I thought if the federal money came a month after the provincial money, we wouldn't be prepared. I actually thought it's going to come out here tonight and I was going to see 2024, these streets, this section of town, 2025, 26. As homeowner and business owner, we need some of that information. And I know some of it's coming, but I'm disappointed it's not there tonight. The second part, you know, I'm very well aware that the work is going to be done on the pipes by the city, but there's lots of responsibility to the homeowners and business owners that hasn't been touched on tonight. You know, when you come take the pipe in front of my home, assuming my house is being impacted, you know, is it coming sideways? Is the whole front of my yard dug up or is it coming out directly right to the street? What are the impacts? Obviously, there's lots of responsibility back to homeowners who do not know that. I was hoping that would be addressed tonight. So, you know, there's certainly things there that I, like I say, I commend everybody from the politicians, especially the support of the port, huge, you know, booster to make it all happen. So, you know, you've got a great team, you've done a great job, and yes, it's going to get worse before it gets better. But that's the part why I say I'm disappointed of not seeing more of that information out tonight. So, like I say, some of that might be answered after I'm done. The second part is just some of the comments with regards to the city. And Herb, you and I have had a couple of conversations on this, but, you know, I moved here in 2002, bought a home, bought a business, years ago, expanded that business. So you've got this great infrastructure to help downtown, but you've got all these other businesses outside of downtown that you need to be reminded are part of Prince Rupert and should not be neglected, should have some type of incentives as well because you said it, how much development has been done? So, excuse me, you've got a minimum amount of people that live here that know the obstacles, that know about the Muskogee, that, you know, know about the rock, and I know it very well. And so you're holding those people back from investment because they're not right in the downtown. We all want the downtown better, but you've got the rest of Prince Rupert that are good possible developers that's there. And then the second part, and we've heard about some of the things with the city. Over the years, I've had my challenges, but I've also had a lot of successes with the city. But I'll tell you something that I've told my staff for years when I was still working, and that is, there comes a point where perception becomes reality. Perception is now reality. Dealing with the city of Prince Rupert for any type of development, whether it be renovation or new, it's not good. That perception is, the city of the Prince Rupert is the last place you want to do it. And so the conversation you and I had a couple of weeks ago is, if the information that I hear, which most of it I know is pretty valid, when you talk about out-of-town developers, you talk about the credit union, any of those that's there, you take the challenges that the people have been dealing with the last few years, that perception is reality. The city is not open for business. Whether it is or not, like I say, perception is now reality. We need to change that perception and you need to change it locally first because there are people in town who will develop, even knowing all the obstacles. So that should be the main focus, and I agree, getting a business group together and it's not a matter of two or three people. You should probably have about 10 solid business people that have history over the last 20 or 30 years together, and they'll tell you the facts. And they'll tell you why they didn't do certain developments. If you're going to make that curve go forward, okay, you got to look in the mirror here and you got to find a way to change the perception. Thank you.
Did you want to talk at all about the pipe part of that? Details on the pipe?
Thank you for the comment. So we would love to be further along than we are. The issue was, was that when we got the 65 million, we were ready to start right away, but the federal government put the brakes on that immediately and they said, if you spend a dollar of that money, you will not have your matching funds to go up against the 77 million. So we had to basically just sit on our hands and really do nothing until we were able to either get a positive or negative announcement. There was a chance that we weren't going to get the money, we would have lost a year, which was obviously a struggle for us as a team to go through. And it was tough because we had money sitting in the bank that we wanted to use to fix pipes and we couldn't. So that was the reality of that decision. And again, we're now, after a few weeks of getting the announcement, we will have the first set of corridors out within the next few weeks. We have a sort of a proposed set. And one of the reasons why we haven't released them yet as well is that we're looking at different technologies on how to be as innovative as possible, where we can use technologies like directional drilling or pipe lining and things like that so we don't have to dig up as many yards and make large holes and possibly with people with retaining walls, we can go under them and things like that. But there will be instances where we do have to take up somebody's retaining wall on our, on city property, or there will be issues where we are going to have to dig up in front of people's houses or in their driveways. And that will be a challenge. And we're trying our best right now to look at all of these different technologies to make sure that we can do it the best way possible and be in and out as quickly as possible. I hope I answered your question.
And I'll drive that point home even further. I suspect at the end of three years, you're going to be really, really eager to get rid of me. It's going to be incredibly disruptive. I mean, just imagine what's going to happen. Imagine your street, if your street is one of them, where we close the whole street. You can't bring your groceries to your front door anymore because you can't get down your street. And then we lay a temporary pipe above the ground delivering water to your house, probably with a boil water advisory because it's temporary pipes. And then we start digging and making a mess. And then that retaining wall that you've loved for the last 20 years that happens to be sitting on city property, you knew it was city property, but you built it there. We're not going to be able to use that money to put that retaining wall back or we won't get 26 and a half kilometers of pipe done, right? And so this is going to be incredibly disruptive. It is going to require a lot of the community. And then there are people I know who are eager for us to come dig up their streets because the streets are so bad and they're hoping they're on the list, but the fact is their pipes might be in okay shape and we're not redoing that street, right? So I expect three years from now, if we're doing this, there'll be a little hangman's noose somewhere saying, you know, burn mare pond in effigy. But we'll get through it together. Anyway, thank you. Go ahead.
I'll see if this mic's on. So I have a bit of a one-two punch question. So for the infrastructure and the housing, what is the hard timeline on it? So you have talked about the 26 kilometers of pipe that you guys are replacing and the amount of housing that you're needing to put in in the next 20 years. Do you guys have a hard timeline and what are the markers you're using to track that? And if so, if you are instituting a timeline, how can the citizens also keep the city accountable?
On housing?
You talked about putting in about, what was it, 5,000 houses in the next 20 years?
Yeah. So the challenge is, with a hard timeline, is we don't control it. We can create the atmosphere for it, right? But we are not a home builder. And believe me, you don't want us to be a home builder or be in that business. So it's that, there's a big piece of it that's out of our control. We can create the atmosphere, we can invite the developers. We are seeing some projects, go ahead now, First Nations project, the Lakewalms project is proceeding well, there's a number of others that are in the pipe being considered. But we aren't the one in the end that says, okay, we'll build 100 houses here. And so while we have aspirational goals, it's not, it's not like the water pipes where we're in control and we can put hard timelines with the water pipes. We rely on the development community and the provincial government through their housing initiatives also to do a lot of the housing. Yeah. I know that's not satisfactory, but it just is. Go ahead.
Housing, of course, is such a big issue across the country. And you mentioned, you know, developers need to come in and build houses. Is enough land actually available for them to build on? If you look at the land on this island, it's been surveyed, you can access survey maps. There's a lot of parcels of land on this island within the municipality, like in the immediate town, that is owned by the city, but they're not selling it. It's not for sale.
Everything the city owns is for sale?
Is it? Because I've gone to City Hall before and asked, can I buy this lot? Are any lots available? I got shut down. No lots are for sale. This wasn't within the last year, this is maybe two or three years ago. And I see a lot of development as being encouraged or maybe it's renovations are being encouraged or let's just deal with the houses on the lots we have. That's the impression I'm getting, maybe I'm wrong. But when you look at those survey maps, you can find them online, you will see massive neighborhoods that could be developed. Maybe not everyone wants to buy that chunk of dirt by the ferry terminals for $25 million. Maybe they want to buy a couple of lots and build a couple of houses. Maybe they're just small general contractors. Is that option, am I off mark or am I off base? Could you let us know?
A little bit off mark. Really, we started a few years ago, actually, putting out advertisements for a bunch of city lots to sell. We had one offer. We also did an RFP for housing development. We had a, you know, one group that came in and we did a lot of discussions with, but at the end of the day, they didn't proceed. We have marketed directly to developers out of town. We've, you know, anybody that wants to develop, you know, come on in. We do have a lot of land. The lots, the survey lots that you're referring to, a bunch of those are being transferred directly to Legacy so we can deal more efficiently, you know, with that in terms of getting housing. The land's available, we, you know, and for a proper market value, we will sell it. We want to see it, absolutely.
The only sort of codicil I put around that at all is that we don't sell land so that you can sit on it, right?
No.
Anytime we sell land, it's got a clause on it that says, you got to build within a couple of years. Yeah, yeah, yeah. But if you see a piece of city land and you want to put a house on it, come on in. Okay. I'm going to call that quits there. If you have more questions, you can ask any of these councillors who are sitting down here and haven't answered one. Or you can go to the mayor of Port Ed and he might sell you some land. And I need to compliment Mayor Bjornald. We have a wonderful working relationship with the District of Port Edward and he's been leading the charge on that. He phones me regularly, we go for lunch regularly, and it just helps in everything that we're doing, knowing that we're supported. We appreciate you. But with that, if you have any questions, these folks will hang around. City councillors are here, I'll stay around. But thank you so much for taking some time on a otherwise beautiful Thursday evening to come on in and listen about the future of your city. Thank you.[1798.83][1798.83]